Thirty, I would like to welcome you and call to order the May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are now... Do we have any... Worked to the approval of the agenda? Councilman Rose Pepe?
I'd like to add to the consent agenda, excusal of Councilmember Deener for business reasons. Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Deener from this evening's meeting. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
I said yes.
Yes, works.
It's consent.
I follow directions.
Okay. Is there any opposed? No. Okay. So with that, we will move on to our first citizens' comments. The citizen comment period is limited to items on the agenda, our first public comment period. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please raise your hand and be acknowledged and step to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Should we approve the agenda first?
Oh, let's do that. We amended it. Should we now approve it? Okay.
Make a motion for any approval of the agenda.
As amended.
As amended. Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, same sign. Okay. Then we will remember the comments I made just a minute ago about the citizens' comments, and we will open for our first citizen comments. Sir, did you wish to address council today, this evening? No? No? Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. And we will move on. We do not have a presentation this evening, but we do have a public hearing. And I will move the public hearing to Mr. Bond. Do you have comments opening up our...
On April ninth, two thousand nineteen, the City Council adopted an emergency ordinance, interim ordinance, to provide regulations for the sighting and development of secured residential facilities for sexually violent predators. Per RCW thirty-six seventy-eight, three ninety, the council is required to hold a public hearing within sixty days of adoption of an interim ordinance. Following the public hearing, the council may direct staff to prepare a permanent ordinance to be considered at a public hearing within six months of the adoption date of the interim ordinance. Staff recommendation is to direct staff to prepare a permanent ordinance based on the emergency ordinance for council adoption prior to October ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Now that we have a description of the public hearing, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on the public hearing regarding the interim ordinance regarding Municipal Code, Chapter twenty dot three nine, Social Services Facilities? Jerry, did you wish to comment during our public hearing?
I am not.
Okay. Again, I will ask if there's anyone who wishes to testify during the public hearing. If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. And I will ask now if we want to take any action on the public hearing. Councilman Clausen?
Madam Mayor, I would move to direct the staff to prepare a permanent ordinance based on the emergency interim ordinance for council's adoption prior to the October ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Does this need a formal motion to have that directive, or can we just provide that directive, right?
It's not required, but it's already made. It's good.
Okay. I'm not seeing any further discussion, and this is specifically an ordinance or amending the Municipal Code, Chapter twenty thirty-nine, for the... What's the word I'm looking for? Sexually violent predators. Yes, housing for sexually violent predators. So, Councilman Clausen?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about it, though. I think a motion would be appropriate because the council generally doesn't direct staff that's done through the mayor. So, in the mayor's absence, it's clear that it's the council's decision, dependent upon whether it's voted up or down on this motion.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor to direct staff to prepare a permanent ordinance based on the emergency interim ordinance for adoption prior to October ninth, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move now to our next agenda item. And I'm moving down my packet. There it is. This is Ms. Reinsen. It's adopting a resolution approving the collection of funds for Chimes and Lights events.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council. Last year was the twentieth anniversary of the Festival of Chimes and Lights. The Chimes and Lights Committee held a Bay Street decorating contest, which was very successful. The committee would like to have contests again this year, as the city received positive feedback about it. When applicants participate in an activity requiring a payment to offset the cost to the city sponsoring the activity, the city council has determined it to be appropriate for them to pay the city a fee of fifty dollars, with the money going directly to the cost of purchasing the themed item and expenses associated with placement, transporting, maintaining, supplies, and the alike. Staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution allowing the city to collect funds for Chimes and Lights events. And I will just add on that the original direction was to have this brought up every year, as the tree decorating contest was pretty successful moving forward, but this gives the authority of the committee if they want to change for a different contest, maybe a stocking contest, whichever. This gives the city the authority to collect those funds, to have the businesses, the public participate, and then the city get costs for those associated with those type of themes. So, again, specifically for... On the resolution, the city of Port Orchard shall collect a fee of fifty dollars from each person or entity participating in a city-sponsored activity at the Festival of Chimes and Lights event. Collected fees will be used solely for the purchase of the activity-related items and any other costs associated with putting on that activity. So if the committee decides not to do a particular activity that's going to cost, then, you know, there's nothing that we need to do or remove. It's just there so that way we can have that. So that's what I have. And again, staff recommends you approving the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Councilwoman Corelli?
I move to adopt a resolution allowing the city to collect funds for Chimes and Lights events.
Second.
Since you made the motion, would you like to speak to it first under discussion?
Well, I just agree that this is a very efficient way of handling it, instead of coming back to the council every year. The event went so well, and it was really the business owners and the pop cell organization wanted to repeat it, and of course, I did too. So, I'm very happy about this. And I think that this fee was reasonable and took care of the costs, so the city wasn't out on anything with the trees.
And I think that was my question, was I thought the fifty dollars was a reasonable fee for what the city provided the tree and the planning of it, the removal of it, and all of that. My question is, because this is now going to be ongoing, is it appropriate to leave the fifty dollar fee in there? Or do we want to leave the fee in there and then adjust it if we have an activity that may cost a little more in the future?
When staff was preparing the resolution before the council, I did consult with the finance director as well as legal counsel, and that was one of our questions as well. And at this time, we felt it was appropriate just to leave it at fifty. If, for some reason, there's something that is more expensive, or we decided to go in a different direction, we can repeal it altogether or lower the amount, but we just felt at this time it was appropriate just to leave it for fifty.
So I think leaving it is just fine, yeah. And certainly for this year, we've already checked on pricing, and again, it will sufficiently cover everything. Yes.
John?
Just a question, since you've talked with the finance director. Now that this is kind of a formal thing, is the finance director ready to receive these funds and account for them and all that sort of stuff?
Yes, upon the passage of this resolution. This gives him the authority to do so. And he did review it, and he was okay with it, and he didn't have any issues with it.
And just for your information is, we're not going to start collecting these funds until September, after September ninth, I believe it is. So, the staff won't be collecting until then.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, we will be voting on a motion which has been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution allowing the city to collect funds for Chimes and Lights events. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Our next agenda item is approval of an interlocal agreement between public agencies to participate in the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And again, Brandy, you are the lead on this.
Yes. So after April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, regular council meeting, Councilmember Ashby mentioned that the PRTPO has had...
Had Washington State Department of Transportation as their lead planning agency, but were notified last April that they would no longer do so. After a selection process, the PRTPO board passed two resolutions, one which designated Kitsap Transit as their lead planning agency, and the second designating Jefferson Transit as their fiscal agent. As these are major changes, the Department of Transportation is asking the PRTPO to be recertified. This is an opportunity to update their interlocal agreement and bylaws. The original interlocal agreement was made in nineteen ninety-one, and the city of Port Orchard does not receive funding through the PRTPO, but the city does receive collaboration and networking. So staff recommends approving an interlocal agreement to jointly participate in the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization, which is known as the PRTPO.
Thank you. John?
Yes, I just want to announce that I am an employee of Kitsap Transit, the executive director of Kitsap Transit, and although I have no financial gain from this, I would certainly, I feel I could vote on it biasedly, but if there's anyone that would object to me voting on it, I'd be happy to step down.
No problem.
No.
If anybody in the audience would object?
Okay.
All right. Is that sufficient, Madam Attorney? Thank you.
With that, what's council's pleasure? Sean?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve an interlocal agreement to jointly participate in the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
I just have a question and clarification. I understand that we don't receive any funding from it.
Correct.
And we're also not on the hook for paying any dues.
Correct.
Okay. It refers to the bylaws, and I was going, okay. I'm looking at the bylaws.
Correct. The bylaws were not included in your packet.
Okay.
I can provide you a copy.
Yeah, that's...
The bylaws were... The final version were established last Friday. We did send them out yesterday, the updated ones, the final ones, which I believe either went to Brandy or Michelle. They may have gone to Michelle. I got a copy. Some interesting things in the bylaws, and I will say this because I probably should let Port Orchard City Council know what I said at the bylaw meeting. And one of the issues with the bylaws that we adjusted was the quorum. There are four counties involved with the Peninsula RPTO, and there are nine cities that have the opportunity to be part of it. Statutorily, to be an RPTO, all counties have to sign the interlocal agreement. Sixty percent of the cities that represent seventy-five percent of the population have to sign it. Those are the only entities that are statutorily required in order to form an RPTO. Yet, the bylaws for the RPTO did not require representation of any county or city to be present in order to have a quorum. We required the amended bylaws, the existing bylaws, required that three counties be represented by jurisdictions within the counties, and that at least one, two members from jurisdictions within a county had to be present. One of those members had to be an elected official. So, in essence, you could have a port district with an elected official as a representative and a transit agency there, and they would have, from three of the four counties, and they had a quorum and could make decisions. Well, the city of Port Orchard took exception to that and offered language that two cities and two counties needed to be present for a quorum. We did not specify that they had to be the electeds. Some of our jurisdictions, rather than... They will have technical folks that have been given the authority to vote on policy issues, represent them sometimes at meetings, but the city of Port Orchard did not like the idea that business could be accomplished without a county or city present when the counties and cities are statutorily required to be members. So, that was one of the changes that we did in the bylaws. If you were to look at the old bylaws, yeah. And we added... I'll get into the weeds here. House Bill fifteen eighty-four was passed this last year, which requires all the RPTOs to extend invitations to all tribal nations that have reservation property within their jurisdictions every two years to be members. We do this automatically, but we did put that language in our bylaws. So, those were the primary things. I would just let our council know that I have reviewed the bylaws in detail, and so I'm personally comfortable with them. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the interlocal agreement to jointly participate in the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If anyone's opposed, same sign. So that passes.
Do we... I don't... I think we took action at the beginning of the year to designate you as our representative to the PRTPO.
We did.
So we don't need to...
Well, we did it last... This is my second year... Well, it's my fourth year on there. After the election, we would be reappointing next January. Right.
During committee assignments, same process.
Okay.
Correct. It's part of that same process, and I have served the last year and a half as the vice chair of the Peninsula RPTO.
And I would add, doing a wonderful job at it. Thank you.
My pleasure. My pleasure. So, anyway, I will just say that getting our ILA approved by the jurisdictions is going quite well. We're very pleased. And so we will move on to business item seven C, which is another interlocal agreement, and this one involves the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. Brandy?
Yes. So on May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, the KRCC board approved updates to the interlocal agreement, which requires council ratification. The changes includes updates to sessions... Actually, it should be sections. To durations, the definitions, memberships, and reputation, financing, and execution and filing of the agreement. A redline version of this agreement was part of this evening's packet. Therefore, staff recommends approving an interlocal agreement to jointly participate in the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council as presented.
Is anyone wanting to make a motion? Okay, Rick?
I move to approve an interlocal agreement to jointly participate in the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council.
Second. I will offer some discussion on this. A few years ago, three or four years ago, Bremerton opted out of the KRCC, and one of their grievances was the voting system and the quorum of KRCC. There was much deliberation, and KRCC changed its quorum and voting requirements. We did that in the bylaws, and Bremerton has come back as a member, a very active, participating member. However, the interlocal agreement had not been changed, and so this action is primarily to make the interlocal agreement be consistent with the bylaws. It also clarifies Kitsap Transit in the interlocal agreement. We had invited Kitsap Transit to be a voting member of KRCC and did so in the bylaws, but had not updated the interlocal agreement. So those were the two primary actions or amendments to this interlocal agreement from what we have been functioning under the last several years. So are there any questions or more discussions on the KRCC ILA? Hearing none, we will vote on a motion which has been moved and seconded to approve an interlocal agreement to jointly participate in the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, same sign. So that has passed. I think that's all that was on our agenda. We got through those. So do we have any discussion items? There were none in our agenda. I don't know if anyone has anything that they want to preliminarily discuss. Do you, Brandy?
Just under department directors' report.
Okay. I would just say, just that the single-use plastic bag issue did not... Was not successful in Olympia this year, and so we're going to be bringing that forward to our work study in May. Economic Development has not reviewed it recently. We thought we would take it to work study, gets everyone's input on it, and then we would have time to take it to Economic Development.
And I believe the county is going to participate with us in that?
Okay.
I hope.
Yeah.
I think we talked to them about that.
Right. The county actually approached us and asked us if we were still willing to move forward, that they were... They had reactivated their work on that. So that's... So that will be coming up the workstation. Okay, now we have reports from council committees. John, do you have anything on finance?
No, other than we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-first at five p.m. here at City Hall.
Okay. And I will do Economic Development. We did not meet yesterday. We will be meeting June tenth, and I think we will have plenty of items for our agenda, probably including the single-use plastic bags. So, utilities?
We were going to have a tour, but that was canceled, and our next meeting will be June seventeenth, nine thirty a.m. here at City Hall.
Are you intending to do the tour sometime?
I don't think we're going to be doing the tour in June, but we'll take it up another time. I think utilities are pretty busy right now.
Okay.
So when that calms down a bit.
When you do do that, could you notice it? Because I would like to ride along.
Okay. We'll do.
Sewer advisory?
Yes, we met April twenty-fourth, and it was a brief meeting, mostly updates on the MBR cassette project, which is completed, was completed in November twenty eighteen. There is still a little bit of follow-up on that, storage building. A very slow process of being completed, but working on incrementally as their staff is actually putting that work, putting out that work, that effort. Really, the next thing is, the next meeting will be August fourteenth. It's at City Hall, here at City Hall at six thirty.
Okay, land use, Fred or Scott or Sean?
There was no meeting, and there is no plan for a future meeting yet.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been emails going around the last couple of days.
Okay. And Jay, lodging tax?
Nothing to report right now, no scheduled meeting.
Okay. Chimes and Lights, Cindy?
Yes, we'll be having a meeting this coming Monday, the twentieth, three thirty p.m. here at City Hall.
Outside agencies. I think we are pretty much up to date on KRCC with the interlocal agreement we just signed. Same with the RPTO. I don't know what other outside agencies people participate in. John?
I don't know if you want to speak to the PSRC's Transportation Policy Group meeting.
But that was last week.
I know, it was a long time ago. I can't remember what I had for breakfast. The only thing that... I think there's a lot of good information there, but the one thing in particular that I was...
Oh, the ferries.
Particularly interested in was the fact that the legislature in approving the budget included funding for a regional passenger-only ferry study update, and the PSRC is going to take the lead role in that, and they will be reaching out to twelve different counties that may potentially have interest in creating some form of passenger-only ferry. I know City Tacoma is interested, Pierce County, others have expressed interest, but... So they're going to be embarking in that study, and I'm looking forward to the results of that.
The other thing that PSRC is involved with is an aviation study and other airports that can take some of the commercial burden off of C-TAC. So PSRC is very engaged right now in various transportation fundings. I will also say, I attended the Port of Bremerton's commissioner meeting this morning, and their lobbyist gave about a forty-five-minute report, and I found it fascinating listening to his report. But one of the things they talked about was their Port Orchard Marina, the breakwater needing replacement, and how important that is to them. And it got my attention because I know that Marina is a very important economic driver for our downtown waterfront district. So, anyway, that's something we'll probably want to...
Hello?
Yeah, yeah, be aware of.
The only other thing I would add is that the PSRC is scheduling their annual meeting that they have, their general assembly meeting. I don't have the specifics on date and time. It's coming up here fairly soon, so...
I think it's May thirtieth.
It's May thirtieth, and all the elected officials are generally invited to that, so it's usually in the early evening. I think it's going to be at the Conference Center in Seattle, the Washington State Conference Center. Beyond that, I don't have the specifics.
I think I do have that information. I'd be happy to send it to the council.
That'd be great.
And just again, as a point of note of interest, Pulse Post Mayor Becky Erickson has been appointed as the chair of the PSRC Transportation Policy Board. Rob Johnson, a Seattle City Council member, had resigned to take a job in private industry, and Mayor Erickson was asked to fill that role. That's a very prestigious role, and...
It is.
It's nice to know that somebody from Kitsap County is in that role to look out for our interests, so...
It equally is nice to know that she's there representing Kitsap Transit, not the city of Pulse Post. the city of Pulse Post, so.
Right, and she is. She is, yeah, yeah. So with that, we will move to, the mayor does not have a report tonight, except that the weather is fine wherever he is, and so we will have reports from the department heads. Nick?
Just one announcement. We had planned to take tax abatement to the work study meeting next week, but it was also on the land use agenda for discussion at that committee, and so it's still in a pretty raw form, and we wanted to vet it at the committee level before taking it to council. So that's being punted until June, and work continues on that. So, that's all.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Yes. So, I have one item. The mayor could not be here tonight, so he asked me to present it to the council to see if a committee would be interested in taking up an item. So I was contacted by a citizen to see if we would be interested in retaking up the offering for sales of dogs and cats in our municipal code. And so she provided me some information. I do believe that the mayor passed on the information that she provided to the full council for you to review it and see if there is a committee that would like to take it up and discuss and maybe revise some of our codes, or not at this time. So, I'm looking for direction from the council.
I don't, I don't think it's that we need to take it up at this time. When it was reviewed, I thought Councilmember Ashby had found the language to be sufficient, and we had no stores violating any concerns about puppy mills, cat mills, or whatever. So I don't feel the need to do that.
In contrast, I think either land use or economic development may want to consider taking it on because the landscape has changed. The Kitsap County, as you may know, is entertaining their own ban on puppy mills, and they currently do have a place called Farmland, whose owners live in Port Orchard. If the county should pass something like that, that would leave Port Orchard as the only municipality without anything like that on the books. So I would recommend that a committee discuss it, if maybe economic development or
I don't think economic development is interested in discussing it.
Yeah, I don't want to speak on behalf of the entire land use committee, but I feel like as a council, we dug deep into this issue and found that it just, it was not applicable to us, that we didn't want to spend additional resources, whether it's staff time, attorney time, to tackle this, and that we were happy with our current code, and that we would, you know, keep an eye on things, and if something were to change in the future, to relook at it. But I'm not aware of anything in our community that has changed, and I'm pleased with where we're at right now.
I don't think it's appropriate for finance committee either.
Nor the Festival of Chimes and Lights Committee.
About lodging tax.
Not going to say anything right now.
I'm reading my, did we sufficiently give you the information you needed?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
On my cheat sheet that you gave me, Brandy, do we have an executive session? Okay. With that, we are to our second citizens' comment period. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to give testimony on items that are not on the agenda, we would be happy to hear that now. Is there anyone who is interested in speaking to the council, offering comment? Seeing none, I would adjourn our meeting.